Take a seat.
I'm next there, I'll sit next to you.
I just want to make sure they're not supposed to sit there.
Are you sitting like right under this chair?
Sit wherever you please.
Oh, okay. So where are the microphones?
These are the girls' room.
Right.
They're on very sexy.
Podcasting whatever you need. So Brittany's just gonna shout this out. Do I get to take mine with me? Do I get to take my sign with me when I go?
You sure can. What else are we gonna do with it?
Souvenir.
I would keep it.
I like that idea. Thank you.
Are we official now?
So Jovine?
Get it.
Does this just pick up?
Yeah.
Like lean into it or anything?
No, it's, it picks up the area.
The area.
So.
Is the green lighting on?
Yes.
Is that the reception?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put it on tomorrow.
Personnel matters.
You know, but you can zoom in.
You can zoom in.
All right. There's a reason. Okay. So. I'm sorry. We may tag a person. Tells me when. Are they hiding?
You're good to go.
I am. They're hiding behind the wall.
Okay.
If we can reconvene our meeting to open session, the board has been in executive session since six o'clock. Well, actually.
We can't back.
Hold on, I'm gonna take that back. The board was in executive session from six o'clock to six thirty to discuss two legal matters and a confidential personnel matter. And then from six thirty to seven, we had our twenty, twenty-two, tenured faculty reception. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We could have introductions.
Catherine Natto.
Judy P. Hough.
Wendy Sampson.
Meredith Moriarty.
Willow Bear.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Dave Hurst.
Christine Beck.
Holly Dallinbaugh.
And Jody Monroe.
First up on the agenda is the approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two regular board meeting.
Show move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Three are meeting reports and next is our superintendent's report.
Sure. Thank you. Just for all of the new people in the room, this is our first meeting in this room. We're not normally this unorganized, so I just want to put that out there. So I do think it's important to mention the school shooting that took place in Uvalde, Texas last week. I cannot imagine the grief the community is struggling with. I have received numerous emails from parents asking about our safety plans and also offering suggestions and concerns. I want to reassure the community that we do have our district's safety plans in teams as well as the building plans in place. These are updated annually. We will be following up on these plans and working with the local police to address ways that we may better improve our plans, taking into consideration what parents have asked us to consider. We do realize the importance of our safety measures and we'll do all that we can to make our schools as safe as possible. If parents are concerned about their, how their children are handling their feelings, we did provide some resources for families, but we also have counselors in all of our buildings that students can speak with. I also wanted to congratulate our boys tennis team who is headed to states, I think, next weekend.
Is that correct, Kristen? Next weekend?
The tenth, I believe.
Yeah, next weekend, so we want to wish them the best of luck in the tournament. And next, we'd like to recognize our tenured candidates, so do you want to do a motion or do you want to?
Yeah, why don't we do the motion first? Our tenured faculty are farther down on our agenda, but let's move them up. I have a motion to move item six A up on the agenda to right now.
Show move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Terrific. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through twelve.
Show move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And we have certificates for all of you, so we are going to, Dave, are you going to announce them? Just the list there? And then, yeah, let's.
They look like they're in alphabetical order.
While you're getting that set up, I just want to say, so as teachers are recommended for tenure throughout the year, we're presented by your school principal and given sort of a background of who you are and what they've witnessed in the classroom and why you're such an important addition to the district. And it's one of our, I'll speak for myself, it's one of my favorite parts of coming to board meetings and getting sort of a glimpse into what goes on on a daily basis into the buildings that we don't normally get to see. So it was really exciting to meet everybody who I've already heard about, but to put a face with it and congratulations to everybody.
All right, I bought time, you're all set.
First up, we have Liz Colliton, who is a counselor here at the high school.
Next, we have Mick Domal, who is a phys ed teacher at Slingerlands. Jessica Gallo, who is a speech language pathologist at Eagle Elementary. Marissa Hock, an ELA teacher at the middle school. Lisa Hertz, who is a social worker at the middle school. Kristin Jordan, an elementary teacher at Eagle Elementary. Ally Kosik, who is a music teacher at the middle school and Elsmere. Brianna Kugler is a fax teacher at our middle school. Sorilla Paluso, a social worker at Eagle. Joanna Perrino, a teacher at Glenmont Elementary. Brian Spina, a math teacher here at the high school. Matt Urban, teacher at Eagle Elementary. Jess Van Warmer, a social worker at the middle school. David Wargula, a teacher at Glenmont Elementary. And Nicolaen Winklerak, a math teacher at the middle school.
And now the real test is the photo.
The real test.
I would just say, congratulations to all you guys. We're so excited to have you tenured and with us.
I'm gonna bring five of you around this way.
Do you need to do like a little bit of size order there? Some forward, some back.
So how about, how about, no, we can do this. Yeah. Well, no, you can do it.
There we go.
All right. Okay, I think I've got it. Congratulations.
Yes, we want to make sure you don't have to stay.
Yeah, you guys, it's okay if you guys.
Yeah. Unless you want to hear about bell time.
You are welcome to.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thanks. You want to do your work, we don't want to distract you.
Thank you.
I told you it would really be a long one.
Everyone wants to hear about bell time.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Hey, Tim.
You too.
I'll catch you online.
Okay. All right.
And next, I'd like to introduce Dr. Letitia Ellis-Williams. She, we had the pleasure of her being with us all day today and she's being recommended as our new chief diversity, equity, and inclusion officer. And I know her appointment is later on in the agenda, but she has many family members here who have a little bit of a trek to go back home tonight, so we thought we would give you a little lead time to get headed out. So I don't know if you want to move that and let Letitia say?
Yeah, let's do the same thing that we did for our, our tenured faculty. If, I have a motion to move item six B on the agenda up to this point.
Show move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following separated professional personnel action item, number one, for the appointment of the chief diversity, equity, and inclusion officer.
Show move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries.
Would you like to say a few words, Letitia? You are, you did say today, you said you're a talker, so.
You should use the microphone, though, only because we, we do live, we do stream the meetings and so that way if anyone's listening, they can.
Well, I just want to thank the Board of Education, Ms. Monroe, and the committee and the panels that interviewed me for this wonderful opportunity to join Bethlehem Central School District. I'm really excited about this work and I'm eager to roll my sleeves up. My email is effectively working today. My start date is July one. Feel free to schedule a conversation or a meeting with me, July one. And again, I thank you and I look forward to this work and thank you to those of you who came to introduce themselves. And I wanted to thank my family and my colleagues for coming up from Long Island today. My mom, my aunt Neese, my Aunt Linda, my husband, Dr. Williams, Mark Pitterson, Tisha, Tim, my brother Nick. I thank you so much. I have an amazing village and they definitely showed up for me today, so thank you.
I'll just say, welcome. We're very excited to have you here and like we said before, you do not need to stay.
I had a rough day today.
And thank you to her family for coming up and supporting her.
She's so amazing.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
Bye, Tim. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Bye. Safe travels.
I'm gonna let him finish the way.
Oh.
Well, thanks, I'm thanking him now.
That does conclude superintendent's report for tonight. Okay. Anybody have any questions for Jody? Moving on to our board report, first, I just wanted to note, I know there's a number of concerts that are happening at the middle school and the high school over the next couple of weeks. If anybody is interested in attending them but does not have the relevant information, let me know. I'm happy to get it for you. Also, on June tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, here at the high school, the VJ Catch group is performing right here in D one twenty-two. They're gonna be doing Midsummer Night's Dream and I hear it's going to be a good production. So if anyone feels like a little Shakespeare in the middle of June, come check it out. I don't have, I don't know anything about tickets or anything yet, but I assume we will hear about that sometime in the next, next week.
It's in this room, right?
It's, yep, they're, they're doing it in here. That's my understanding.
It's gonna be strange because anytime I ever saw it, it was not air conditioned in June, so.
Yeah.
It will be a treat.
Indeed, indeed. And that is, that's all I have. I don't know if anyone has anything else they wanted to add?
I do. Apparently, over the weekend, Bethlehem hosted the state tournament for Ultimate Frisbee and I would like to say that a good time was had by all. Our players played well and I was here Sunday for the more, you know, non-rainy day of festivities and it was hot and beautiful and, and they played very, very well. So yay, B.C. Ultimate.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to say, we all attended, well, the four of us over here, attended the award ceremony for the seniors and some of, some of the juniors and it was nice to see all of our students being recognized for their hard work over their four years and so that was a good event.
I attended last night. Elsmere had its choir and orchestra and band concerts at the middle school and we were told that it was the first concert in the middle school since twenty twenty. And it was just really wonderful to see all the kids back performing together and having a great time, so I wanted to thank everybody who helped put together all the concerts.
And the only other thing I wanted to say, Willow, thank you for saying that to all of the newly tenured teachers. That was very nice. It's nice to see, I was telling Dave, it's nice to see, like, I've had kids, three kids graduate and just to see the teachers that are replacing the ones that retired, it, it's nice. And having the opportunity to learn more about them, like Willow said, and to see, you know, what's coming in, it's really, makes me happy to see that we're replacing some of the great teachers we had with new ones, so.
Like Meredith, I was able to go to the fourth and fifth grade band and choir performances for both Hammock Grail and for Glenmont last week and cried uncontrollably through both of them. I think, well, for a number of reasons, but it was, it was just so nice to be back in the school building, which for most parents is the first time we've set foot in there in quite some time and to see what our kids are working on and to meet their teachers in person and it was really nice. And there's all kinds of end of the year events sort of back to normal, which is incredible. And I guess I wondered whether we've had any issues with any of that or we've just slid very comfortably back into more of a return to normal. I assume if, if we were having concerns, we would have heard about them and it's, it's really, really, really exciting to see some of that happening. It feels really good.
Yeah, I haven't heard any. I think it's a little, for some parents, it's a little odd because they haven't been in, but I think generally, once they're in and their, their kids are performing or they're in an activity, the book fairs and all of that, they're just thrilled, right? To actually be with their, you know, kids and their teachers and I think, I've heard nothing but positives.
You could feel the parents sort of remembering how to interact with one another the way our kids probably did like a year and a half ago, right? Sort of awkwardly sitting around like remembering how to interact without masks in person. Very funny.
Next are our student reports. I think we have someone here from the student.
She feels very alone.
Hi, I know. This is, I was like, oh, it's a full house and then everyone disappeared. I don't know which one's worse. I'm sorry that I haven't been here in so long. I became super busy with the track, but I'm the student senate president. This is probably my last meeting. It's been lovely to speak in front of you all this year. A few updates from student senate. We ran the blood drive with the Red Cross last week, which went very well. We were overwhelmed with high school and staff members who signed up, which was very nice. We actually ended up having to turn away students because the Red Cross was understaffed, but we met our goal and we provided forty pints of blood, I believe, which was really nice. We were, the high school participated in the canned instruction, which is where students brought in canned goods and a senior, for her senior art portfolio, actually created an art piece out of the canned goods. I believe it says B.C. and I think that's being displayed in the library, if I'm correct, if you want to check it out on your way out. Junior prom happened, which went well, and senior ball is this week, which is exciting, and I believe that is it. Oh, and our elections for next year are happening. Signups were this week and we will send out the voting form hopefully at the beginning of next week. And that is all. Is there any questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you for your service on the student senate and for coming to keep us informed. We appreciate it.
And where are you off to in the fall?
I'm going to see Boulder in Colorado.
Awesome. I love that school. Beautiful.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
And you, and you also can leave. You don't have to. Next up is our presentation and tonight our presentation is a follow-up on the bell time discussion.
Okay, so much of this presentation you've seen before. It's just a recap to the information presented and we had a request if we could get feedback from students. So Dave Domal, Dave Hurst, and I went to the senior classes because that's a group of students who were actually here when the committee convened to look at bell times. They actually remembered it. So basically what I shared with them, I, I pretty much did the presentation that I shared with the board and that there's two models that we could consider moving forward. And basically Model A is what we have now. Model B is reversing the start times for the middle school and the high school and gave them this information. And then the next slide, we shared what the period schedule would look like in Model A, so again, similar to what we have now currently. And then Model B, showing that the middle school, the time they would need to arrive and what that nine, because they have a nine-period day versus the eight-period day and what the after-school time would look like. The next slide. So in the student presentation, I shared with them some of the concerns that we had talked about with both of the models and obviously the goal was trying to get the high school back to the eight o'clock start time. I also talked about the middle school piece where students would have to wait for the late bus because of the middle school ending that early, so they would have to wait at the middle school for about an hour and then be transferred to the high school. So I provided that, those kind of bullet points and basically you can see these are the advantages and disadvantages with the start time. This is related to Model A and you can see some specific comments that the students had. We did get to all the senior classes, so this is a pretty good representation of what summarizes their, their thoughts on this. It was kind of interesting because the seniors were very concerned about how this would impact the middle school students. They felt that that after-school time was a big problem. They talked about how with high school kids, they're more flexible, they're not reliant on their parents as much to get to and from different places. So, you know, obviously in Model A, this is pretty much the current schedule. There's no impact on the student athletes or CTE students. They do have a little bit more after-school time and the one thing you'll see on the next slide, even, even losing ten minutes or so at the after-school time for the high school kids was seen as detrimental for them. So we go to the next slide, you can see that they outline more disadvantages. They did address the middle school students, you know, that they also would lose sleep over this, but that really wasn't their primary concern. They really had a hard time with thinking about middle school kids getting out so early, which I think, Willow, you had brought up about the concern about especially sixth graders being done that soon and, and not really having much to do after school. They also talked about a lot of them who are seniors had middle school siblings who they often would go and pick up or bring things to. So they really felt that the after-school time was a big problem for the middle school students in having to wait that long to actually get home. Because if you're, if you do kind of the pragmatics on that, with middle school not leaving for three forty-five and then coming to the high school for a transfer bus, they're technically done at two fifteen in the afternoon and some of them would not get home till five o'clock if they're taking the late bus. And it's, it's really, really, really exciting to see some of that happening. It feels really good.
Yeah, I haven't heard any. I think it's a little, for some parents, it's a little odd because they haven't been in. But I think generally, once they're in and their, their kids are performing or they're in an activity, the book fairs and all of that, they're just thrilled, right, to actually be with their, you know, kids and their teachers. And I think, I've heard nothing but positives.
You could feel the parents sort of remembering how to interact with one another the way our kids probably did like a year and a half ago, right? Sort of awkwardly sitting around, like, remembering how to interact without masks in person. Very funny.
Next are our student reports. I think we have someone here from the students.
She feels very alone.
Hi, I know. This is, I was like, oh, it's a full house and then everyone disappeared. I don't know which one's worse. I'm sorry that I haven't been here in so long. I became super busy with track. But I'm the student senate president. This is probably my last meeting. It's been lovely to speak in front of you all this year. A few updates from student senate. We ran the blood drive with the Red Cross last week, which went very well. We were overwhelmed with high school and staff members who signed up, which was very nice. We actually ended up having to turn away students because the Red Cross was understaffed. But we met our goal and we provided forty pints of blood, I believe, which was really nice. We were, the high school participated in the can instruction, which is where students brought in canned goods. And a senior, for her senior art portfolio, actually created an art piece out of the canned goods. I believe it says B.C. And I think that's being displayed in the library, if I'm correct. If you want to check it out on your way out. Junior prom happened, which went well. And senior ball is this week, which is exciting. And I believe that is it. Oh, and our elections for next year are happening. Signups were this week and we will send out the voting form hopefully at the beginning of next week. And that is all. Is there any questions? Okay, thank you so much. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you for your service on the student senate and for coming to keep us informed. We appreciate it.
Where are you off to in the fall?
I'm going to see Boulder in Colorado.
Awesome.
I love that school.
Beautiful.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
And you, and you also can leave. You don't have to. Next up is our presentation. And tonight, our presentation is a follow-up on the bell time discussion.
Okay, so much of this presentation you've seen before. It's just a recap to the information presented. And we had a request if we could get feedback from students. So Dave Domal, Dave Hurst and I went to the senior classes because that's a group of students who were actually here when the committee convened to look at bell times. They actually remembered it. So basically what I shared with them, I, I pretty much did the presentation that I shared with the board and that there's two models that we could consider moving forward. And basically Model A is what we have now. Model B is reversing the start times for the middle school and the high school and gave them this information. And then the next slide, we shared what the period schedule would look like in Model A. So again, similar to what we have now currently. And then Model B, showing that the middle school, the time they would need to arrive and what that nine, because they have a nine-period day versus the eight-period day and what the after-school time would look like. The next slide. So in the student presentation, I shared with them some of the concerns that we had talked about with both of the models. And obviously, the goal was trying to get the high school back to the eight o'clock start time. Also talked about the middle school piece where students would have to wait for the late bus because of the middle school ending that early. So they would have to wait at the middle school for about an hour and then be transferred to the high school. So I, I provided that, those kind of bullet points. And basically, you can see these are the advantages and disadvantages with the start time. This is related to Model A and you can see some specific comments that the students had. We did get to all the senior classes, so this is a pretty good representation of what summarizes their, their thoughts on this. It was kind of interesting because the seniors were very concerned about how this would impact the middle school students. They felt that that after-school time was a big problem. They talked about how with high school kids, they're more flexible. They're not reliant on their parents as much to get to and from different places. So, you know, obviously in Model A, this is pretty much the current schedule. There's no impact on the student athletes or CTE students. They do have a little bit more after-school time. And the one thing you'll see on the next slide, even, even losing ten minutes or so at the after-school time for the high school kids was seen as detrimental for them. So we go to the next slide. You can see that they outline more disadvantages. They did address the middle school students, you know, that they also would lose sleep over this. But that really wasn't their primary concern. They really had a hard time with thinking about middle school kids getting out so early, which I think Willow, you had brought up about the concern about especially sixth graders being done that soon and, and not really having much to do after school. They also talked about a lot of them who are seniors had middle school siblings who they often would go and pick up or bring things to. So they really felt that the after-school time was a big problem for the middle school students in having to wait that long to actually get home. Because if you're, if you do kind of the pragmatics on that, with middle school not leaving for 3:45 and then coming to the high school for a transfer bus, they're technically done at 2:15 in the afternoon. And some of them would not get home till five o'clock if they're taking the late bus. So that was a big concern. They also did have significant concerns about even losing ten minutes on the after-school time for a couple reasons. That's generally a time when students make up exams if they're absent. And so not having forty, closer to forty-five minutes would be problematic in making up exams. There were quite a few kids who talked about that's kind of their downtime if they're participating either in an after-school sport where they have time before their sport might start to have something to eat or relax or get some homework done. The general consensus, I would say, was that by pushing the high school back, you're essentially pushing back the after-school activities or some of them who work, wouldn't be able to work till later. And they felt like you're then pushing all of their, their other things later, which in turn will end up staying up later or not getting as much done until a later time. They wouldn't be home for dinner until later. They wouldn't have those things. They're also identified the athletes who have to travel to some of, not so much for practices, but for games. They would not have access to the after-school time. And then the CTE students who we have, you know, I think I showed about forty to forty-five students in the high school who participate in CTE. Those students would have to come in at the 7:30 time in order to actually get to CTE for the morning session. So in general, the, what the outcome was in the conversations with the kids was basically, if you can get back to a two-tier system, we fully support the eight o'clock time. But other than that, they felt that the cons did not make sense for all the, you know, the advantages did not outweigh the disadvantages right now with the current driver shortage.
Can you, can you remind me though, Jody, like, ignore the, the middle school piece? Just, just the high school start and end for Model B? How different was it than what we did the year we pushed the time back?
Well, it pushed, in order to get the forty-five minute turnaround time, we were starting the high school closer to eight. This puts it closer to 8:15. So in order to still end by the end of the teacher workday, it, it shortens the after-school period, that 2:55, by ten minutes. So part of that is the transportation piece to get the turnaround time.
We also shortened the period length.
Right.
So that we could end and still have forty-five minutes at the end of the day. But with the new regulations for 990 hours, we would not be able to do that.
I gotcha. Some of those, some of those concerns are things that we've heard when we made the decision to move high school and we decided the benefit outweighed some of those concerns. So those aren't new, is, is my point.
Well, the, the, the after-school time is just because of the hour requirement. But yet, that wasn't part of our discussion then, but.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. So.
Where to?
I don't personally see that with the three-tier bus system that it's feasible to move the high school to the later start time.
Joanne, I wanted to thank you for doing this extra work. I know this was something we asked of you to do. And I wanted to thank the high school students for, it seems like they gave you a lot of very useful feedback. And I think it, it says a lot about our students that they thought more about middle schoolers and the impact of their whole family. I mean, that really speaks a lot to their character. I'm someone who's really in support of starting high school later. But it does not seem possible to me with what we have to do with the bus driver shortage at this point. These, you know, seeing, seeing these impacts, the pros and cons. I, you know, I agree with what the high schoolers are saying is that, you know, obviously it's a huge thing for them to be able to, to have an extra half hour or forty-five minutes of sleep in the morning. But if we are losing so much, including the time that they need to relax in, in the afternoon, healthy eating, the fact that CTE students wouldn't be able to appropriately go to their programs, high school athletes would have to choose between, you know, getting to their sports on time or, you know, sometimes missing the end of classes. I mean, it just doesn't seem like it's possible unfortunately this year.
I think that the downsides for the middle school, really for me, push it over the edge. I was always in support of moving the high school time and still would be. And I think if we could focus on getting back to the, the two-tier system instead of switching everything around for what might just be one year, just doesn't make sense to me.
Jody, can you remind us how many more drivers we need to get back to a two-tier system? If you, if you know.
Fifteen to twenty? I think it's fifteen to twenty. Yeah. Because at the time, I think, when we were doing, now, that was somewhat before we did some rerouting and did, looked at some efficiencies. But in general, I think we needed about seventy-five drivers to be, be able to run it, a two-tier system. And we're down to under sixty currently.
Was there, I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
Was there some more work happening to get more reliable data about walking distance and how changing ridership in a real way might reduce routes?
So, yeah, one of, we were actually talking the other day about one of the areas maybe we should spend a little more time focusing on is the high school ridership. Because, you know, we tried to get people to commit, yes, I want transportation. And that really didn't go well. And we didn't get good information. People just signed up just in case they ever needed the busing. But I think that that is potentially an area at the high school level because we have less kids riding in general at the high school level. And over the course of this year, you can, especially in the spring, you see a decline in kids riding. So maybe there's some efficiencies we can garnish in looking at high school runs specifically and look at that a little bit differently, which maybe could free up some capacity for other levels. But I, I still think we would need a, a good number of more drivers in order to, you know, really go. But that's definitely an area we can look at. Or eligibility, we kind of paused that because it did, the bell time and eligibility did work together in some ways. So, but we can certainly revisit that, maybe looking at in terms of high school ridership and eligibility. That might be an area to focus on for the coming year and see if we can come up with some creative solutions.
Yeah, I don't, it just doesn't seem like we're going to magically hire fifteen new people at a time. So it's going to have to be.
Right.
A multi-piece solution.
Right.
I think it would be the, for the board to, I think, make a positive statement that we are looking to go back to an early start time. It's something that we worked hard to get to. It's not something that we're going to be able to get back to quickly. But I think the board has an obligation to the community, given all the work that the community members did, that the board members did, to see that through. And it's a long-term, it's a long-term situation. It's not something we'll get to right away. But when you're talking about efficiencies at the high school and ridership, aren't there certain, aren't we required to provide transportation to, is it everyone that wants it? Or is it everyone that, that attends?
Well, everyone who's eligible. So, anyone who's eligible, we are required. And that's where it gets tricky because, and that's what we were trying to do last year is, you know, if you're not, if you're not generally taking the bus, please let us know because then we can actually do our routes based on true ridership. But we weren't very successful in trying to get people to commit because there were things. I mean, I heard comments, well, what if my kid is playing on a sports team and practice gets canceled that day? I want them to be able to take the bus. So those parents would just sign their kids up to, yes, I want to take the bus. And they might have written it twice all year or never all year. So that's one of the challenges because we can't just say, no.
But aren't those situations rare, those situations rarely come up?
Right.
And they're not all going to come up at the same time so that everyone who's eligible is going to necessarily ride the bus at the same time.
Right.
So maybe if you looked at actual ridership.
Yeah.
And did it, you know, designed it that way with a little extra?
Right.
Figure out how many extra you need and design it that way.
And I know Karim did that this year in part due to necessity because we didn't have enough drivers, where there were some routes that were consolidated and looking at who's scheduled to be on our buses and who's actually riding the buses, you know. But it would be more helpful if people, it's only occasion, I need this. Just please say, I don't need it. And then contact us if you find yourself in a situation that you need transportation. Especially at the middle and high school because most days, we do have a late bus option. So the worst-case scenario is you might have to wait around for the late bus, but you'll, we'll get you home. But.
And every child has to be seated on these buses? There's no standing?
Right.
So the other thing I wanted to see, if we can't go to the start school later this coming year and it's going to be a wait and see as the bus shortage diminishes?
It was never supposed to be for this coming year.
No, I meant.
It was supposed to be for.
The following year, sorry. Can we, this coming school year, like, get a little more detail so we can avoid if that does happen in the future unintended consequences? So now, we need more hours of academics to kind of get an idea of when are the sports buses leaving? How much time that actually really leaves for the after-school help or making up tests? Because even if we can do this, there are some other issues that have come up since we formed those committees.
Correct.
That delays the day. And we have a large number of students. So maybe if we get an idea how many kids, you know, next year actually come in for after-school help, like, maybe teachers can kind of keep track of that a little bit just to get us an idea of what that would mean. We already know how many kids play sports by the signups. But what times are the buses for sports actually leaving versus what we say? So sometimes buses leave, if all the kids get on the bus at 2:30, a half an hour before they're supposed to actually leave school. And if it's, gets out later, how is that going to impact that if they're still leaving early for the sports games? And are they going to have enough time to play in the sunlight? So there's a lot of things that have changed since those committees have heard. If we can use this time next year, maybe, to get some of that info.
Right. And I would say in general, especially this past year, and I know this is true for other districts, a lot of the sports, the games and things were delayed to a later time because every district didn't have enough buses. So you're doing your regular transportation. At the end of the day, you have to get the middle school and elementary kids home. And athletics becomes, is not, is secondary to that. So there were a lot of times that games got shifted later because of the lack of a bus or driver available. So, or we used some of the private transportation to get them there. So. But yeah, we can absolutely have that information.
Just to get an idea, like, are, are the matches having, or games having trouble with daylight come the fall?
Yeah.
And with the shift in the hours, how much time does that really leave? So we're saying ten minutes, but it really sounds like, more like twenty or thirty in reality. I don't know if it's that much, but yeah, we, we can track that. Yeah.
I also wanted to add you also, in addition to studying ridership and walking, changing the, you know, eligibility, you should also look at, you know, what do the elementary school parents want? I mean, many districts have already moved their elementary school students to starting earlier. And it's working in many other big suburban districts around us. So I really think you might want to take a look at that.
Yep.
Because it, it really is more important to have the later start time for, even if it's middle and high school, even if we could get back to having seventy-plus drivers to do the two, the two-tier system. It's really important to think about the needs of the older kids in general. And, you know, the littler kids are up, they're up, they want to do this. You know, we, you know, the, the parents probably, I, I know some parents are, would be looking forward to dropping their kids off on the way to work and, and not having, you know, and just having to worry about after-school care. So that, that has been mentioned.
Model C.
That's been mentioned a few times to me.
It's not up there.
So, yeah, but it, but it has been mentioned in times in passing.
No.
So I, I think there is a market for that. And don't discount it. Don't say, oh, the teachers are not going to want to do it or nobody's going to want to do it. Because they haven't been asked.
Right.
And, you know, it might not be as bad as you think it is.
But also there's contractual issues too.
That's what I'm saying though. They haven't been asked. They might, it might not be, they might not all balk at it. They all might say, well, there's, there's an advantage in changing that time.
I think that's true, Wendy. And I think that, that's true not just for our staff. We talk about contractual matters, but also for families, right? Because whatever works better for families is also some of the responses we got when we put out those different models, you know. If you happen to have elementary children, but that early, you know, you have three young kids and you're trying to get them ready to be at school by 7:20, that may be not be as attractive as it might be for other students. So there's definitely, it depends on everyone's situation, I think, is, and that's hard to.
Right. It's hard to predict because, you know, you are talking probably at this point, at least two years, if not three years out.
Right.
And that's going to change a lot.
Sure.
Catherine, did you have something you?
Yeah, I just, you know, I think that there are no perfect options here. There is no silver bullet. There's not going to be an option that serves every family, that serves every sport and that serves every, every situation. At which point, we have to go back and we have to look at what are our priorities as a, as a district? And then work on ranking our choices from there. At this point, our priority has to be getting children and students to school. That's important. And so if what is going to work best for, if, if what is going to work best and serve the most students and the most families is keep, is Model A, then I can, I can stand with the, the rising consensus on that. However, I would just want to echo others' statements in saying that, based on the priorities, based on the district's priorities and based on the work that's been, been done to align our start times with those priorities, I look forward to getting back to a later start time when it's feasible. I also look forward to continuing to try to figure out the transportation puzzle because this is, this is, I know, I know we're not unique, we're not alone. And, but it is, boy, what a, what a puzzle to solve. So continuing to explore some of what are, what are the root causes? And how can we address getting, getting additional people in the door? That's an, an open question, I think. I think we've done great things this year. Is there more? That's an open question. And then just, you know, working with transportation and figuring out what other efficiencies and whatnot can be made, which everybody has spoken to tonight. So that's, that's, that's fine. And I look forward to those continuing conversations as we work to figure this out in really unprecedented times. And my hat's off to the administration, to transportation, to everybody who has been making this, not just making it work, but really rising real high and, and going above and beyond to, to make sure that things work as well as they have. Nothing's perfect, but this is, this has been good. So thank you for all of your work on putting these different options together. I hold my nose and enjoy the consensus because I do want a, a start time that, that starts later. But I look forward to continuing that conversation when it's, when it's more feasible.
Sure. Yeah, and I don't, I, there's, I don't think there's any objection on the part of the teachers, you know, the, the board, the administration, that getting back to that time is great if we can do it. So we'll certainly continue to look at whatever we can to see how quickly we can do that.
And to Jonathan's point, I think that we can continue to do that actively.
Yep.
To see, you know, how we can get back to a two-tier system if that's what we need.
Yep.
And just keep talking about it. Okay?
Right. And a second echo that the transportation department did pretty well considering all the issues other local districts have had in terms of last-minute cancellations of classes, that we've only had a few buses late here and there and not had to cancel any routes or not had any, you know, any real serious, you know, issue. any routes, or not had any, you know, any real, serious, you know, issues with that. We've been extremely lucky.
Yeah.
And yes, definitely hats off to the Transportation Department for getting us through this year.
Yeah, they've done a great job. So yes, I will be sure to go and thank all of them individually. Yeah. So.
All right. Thanks. Thank you. Next on our agenda is recognition of public comment on an agenda item. We do not have anyone with us, so I'm going to move on from that. We've already handled Item 6A and 6B. Next on the agenda is Item 6A. It is recommended by the Superintendent. The Board of Education approved the following finance action items, one and two.
Shall move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the Superintendent at the Board of Education. Approve the following professional personnel action items, one through twenty-two.
Shall move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. E, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the Superintendent at the Board of Education. Approve the following support staff action items, one and two.
Shall move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. F, other action items. I'm not sure if it's still up there. My understanding is we're going to table Item Four until our next meeting. It is recommended by the Superintendent at the Board of Education. Approve the following action items, one through three.
Shall move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Seven, recognition of public comment on a non.
Point of order?
Oh, yes.
We, sorry.
What I appreciate you doing.
We need to put it on the table. We need a motion.
Um.
Shall I? Shall move.
Terrific.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Seven, recognition of public comment
on a non-agenda item. We still do not have anyone visiting us tonight, so moving on to number eight.
Correct.
Future meetings and events. Tomorrow, Thursday, June 2nd, from four to six, Norman Side is the 2021-2022 retirement reception. On Monday, June 6th, at 5:30, here at the high school, there's an audit committee meeting. On Monday, June 13th, at six o'clock, there's a policy committee meeting. And then our next regular board meeting is on Wednesday, June 15th, at seven, anticipating executive session at six o'clock. We do need to go back into executive session to discuss a personnel matter. If I could have a motion to do so.
Shall move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Adjourned to executive session. I got to figure out a way to not sit in that van.
Oh, I know. This, it gets.